Okay, good morning. We'll call the meeting to order for the day. Commissioner Mojo has gone on family business, or expansion of her family. That's what business is on today. So we'll first order of business is approval of the agenda for the day.
Move approval.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oh, same sign, motion carries. Citizens to be heard, any citizens that would like to be heard on anything that is not on the agenda for the day. Seeing none, approval of payment of bills and vouchers.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve the payment of bills and vouchers. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oh, same sign, motion carries. Approval of minutes from the April 3, 2018 meeting.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oh, same sign, motion carries. First item on the agenda today is request for approval to replace courthouse security electronics. Mark Slough, good morning, Mark.
Okay, so we have security electronics in the courthouse that is the system that provides the safety and security to the prisoners here. There's holding cells within the building, and there's cameras and a whole bunch of that equipment. And you see a picture, part of it when you come through the front door and you see our security folks downstairs. When the courthouse was remodeled 15 years ago or more, the decision was made to tie those security electronics in this building to the existing security electronic system we had, which is in our jail. So all the cables in this building go all the way to the jail, and they use that system over there. So it was a cost-effective solution. As you know, in October, our jail will be gone, the existing jail. So we were looking at how do we deal with that issue. So we've done a lot of research since then, and a lot of looking into exactly what do we need, and what kind of hardware and systems it's going to take to make that work. So what we're looking at now is installing a security system here in the courthouse that will handle their 31 cameras, their 13 intercoms, their door controls, all that kind of stuff that they do now, but it'll be a system here. It will be isolated from the jail system then, in the new correctional facility, so that, the new correctional facility will have its own security electronics, just like our juvenile detention center does. Those are separate standalone systems, then the courthouse will have its own. But when we got to looking at how that would be working, and how we could make that function, we says, hey, this system that we're installing here in the courthouse also has the capacity to handle some of our surveillance cameras that we're installing as part of another project, which is our new law enforcement center, which was designed at that moment in time to have its own standalone camera system in the building for security reasons, or surveillance, we call those. So we've been working with our contractors, and what we were trying to do is figure out how do we best make this system work for us at the lowest cost, and get all the functionality that we need. So what we've done is we worked with the contractor, we've changed out some of the equipment that's going into the new law enforcement center, which is going to give us some cost savings. And in turn, we've looked at the system that we're going to install this building, in this building, and what that's going to cost. So I think we've got a really good plan. It's been vetted through all of our folks that work downstairs, our contractors, our engineers, which are the folks we've been working with through our architects, which have been helping with our new buildings. Everybody's reviewed it, we've gone through every item line by line, we've looked at everything we could possibly do to save money. There's some things we're going to be providing as a county, like the actual servers and some of that stuff, we'll provide to help keep the costs as low as we can. So that's where we sit. What I'm here for today is ask for permission to move ahead with a contract to install new security electronics in the courthouse, replace the ones we've got with ones that are a system here. The price for that is $56,471. We're planning to use a network center communications to do that for us, and probably, and the reason we're doing that is because we're trying to tie into some of the systems we already own, which is, in this case, it's the KeyScan door control system that already is used in all of our existing buildings. We're going to use that same system, so we don't have to duplicate any effort, is what we're really trying to do. We have a cost savings from the camera project in the law enforcement center, I mentioned just a few moments ago, that's about almost $16,000. So what we're really looking at is an expenditure of about 40, just a little over $40,000. Looking at the contingency funds that are available in our projects that we have underway right now, we look, we think that there might be money in there that we could use to help fund this project. Does anybody have any questions?
Yeah, any questions for Mark or discussion on the issue?
Well, I, this has been discussed several times through our construction committees too, and the, this is, this is the best solution, and I think we can take away the word if and say there is funds in the contingency for it. I'm confident, I think the latest report is we were only at 8% or something, and we're three quarters of the way through the project, so I think we're in good shape there, so.
Yeah, Mark, you've done great work on this. It's been, been a lot of effort on his part to see this to this point, so we appreciate that, and with the board's wishes.
Is this going to be for this building and the law enforcement center then?
It will be, the security electronics are for this building, but the camera system will do the law enforcement center also. And that, and door control, actually. So yeah, we're trying to utilize the same systems to do more than one thing to save our costs.
Wasn't the family service center, weren't they going to look at the Keen too?
Yes.
Is that part of it too?
Not at this moment, but it will, we're going to do that probably, probably this fall. Yeah, we can bring those systems in here too, and it really, I don't think it's going to cost us anything to do that. We're just trying not to, I dropped the family service center piece of it, just because it was getting too complex. So I want to get this one up and running first, because we have a timeline we have to hit on the courthouse, and then after that, we can start integrating some of our existing stuff.
I think too, Commissioner Gross, that part of why we kept that separate is, is this is all being done because of the correctional facility project, so it becomes part of that project, and by doing that, we also will get some sales tax credits and things like that from the state of Minnesota. And to include the family service center in there would have just muddied that piece of it, but it still can be done.
And, yeah, we'll do it later.
Mr. Chair, when you said the family service center, and then you said the Keen project at the family service center, my understanding is that this project will include the cameras that surveillance the, the family service center and the parking lot, but then you jump to the Keen issue of electronics. They are two separate, but the cameras will be included here for surveillance, the law enforcement surveillance, because it encompasses the jail and the law enforcement center and everything on the outside. But the Keen is a different, different issue, so that's what got a little bit.
I think that's what I'm committing, I think.
Yeah, yeah, that's what got a little bit confusing there, but the cameras are part of this.
Okay. Any other questions or discretion?
I'll make a motion to approve and go ahead with this motion.
Second. Yeah, a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oh, same sign, motion carries. Thank you again, Mark, for your hard work.
Great, thank you.
Next item on the agenda is request for approval to hire a two-member transition team for juvenile center expansion. Steve Larson, good morning, Steve.
Good morning, good morning. As you guys are aware with the moving forward of our, of our project, we're going to be looking at having to make some adjustments and additions to our staffing plan over the next 15 to 18 months. And the first request, I guess, that we have before you here is this transition team. I think that over the last couple of months when I've been to board, we've kind of mentioned this as a possibility for our needs. It's very similar to kind of the thought process of how the jail is operated. We really have three main focuses that we'll be working on over the next, the next 15 to 18 months, and one is our policies and procedures of the existing building, what's that, what that's going to look like with the expansion. The second part of that is, the challenging part, I think, that we're, we're very different from the jails, that we're going to have to be operating in that facility for the next, for the next, for the duration of that project. And so we start our meetings with the construction management next week, and they're really going to give us that outlook of every, every two weeks, what's going to be upcoming, and so we'd like to have these people in place to make those adjustments to the policies and procedures that we're going to need when parts of the building shut down. We know, for example, we're going to be without a gym for six to eight weeks, so we have to have procedures in place to ensure that we meet the standards for DOC to have an hour of rec. Our elevator's going to be out of commission for up to two months, how are we going to move kids? And so those are just some examples, some examples that we're going to need to have some of that focus on. And then also, one of the reasons that this board really supported the move in the end was the addition of the programs of non-secure to address some of Rhonda's needs, trying to keep the kids in the community. And so this team is, could be working with administration, and again, working with Rhonda and her people to, to make sure that we're establishing those programs, and clarifying the programs that they need to make sure that when we open, we're, we're ready to either start sentencing kids there or bringing kids back to keep them home. So those are, those are really the, the main focus that the people will be working on during this time. We would be, we'd be looking to pay for this. We have revenues over expenditures in both our secure and non-secure program, and so rather than looking to lump some of this in the project, what we would be requesting is to, to utilize the, some of those funds from, from both of those programs to move forward, to pay for that. So, does anybody have any questions?
Yeah, questions for Steve, and I think this is one of those things that, just like it is with the jail project, it's something that we have to do if we're going to do it right, and I think it's unavoidable, so.
I have a question, on the portion that's from the secure, is that accessible to the 11-county consortium?
Yes.
Okay.
That money would come from that, from that fund, yes.
The non-secure would be us then?
That's correct.
Okay.
Yeah, question, now you're hiring two people to do the transition, and then you say you're going to incorporate them into it, to your regular staff?
Correct.
So are we hiring two people who have one talent, and they're going to have to have another talent? Are we hiring the right people that can be worked into the staff?
We feel that we, that we will, yes. We're, we'll be, we'll be looking for those people, a lot of the, you're going to be looking probably internally for that, that group of person that's already kind of shown that they have multiple skills, rather than looking for somebody from the outside to do that. So if that adjustment takes place, the people that we would be hiring wouldn't necessarily, necessarily go into the transition role, but would be going into that line.
Oh, so this would be probably an in-house hiring of these people?
Potentially, yeah, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Any other questions?
So you'd be, you'd be, you'd be looking at probably wanting, wanting the authorization to include Backville?
That's, that's correct, yes.
I'd still move.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oh, same sign, motion carries. Thanks, Steve.
Thank you very much.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Next item, request for approval to purchase in-car video cameras for patrol squad cars, in-car computers on patrol squad cars. Lieutenant Emptying and Lieutenant Brian Green, good morning, gentlemen.
Good morning.
I use the term lightly, but good morning.
Yes, what we'd like to do is upgrade our current camera system, our current computer system that we are running in our, our patrol vehicles. Right now, our current MBR systems are about, majority of them are about seven years old, they're starting to fail. I currently have one DVR system sitting on my office floor that either needs to be sent in for repair, or move forward with this project. I also have another DVR system in a squad car that I was able to get functioning, it's not the best way, you know, to get this thing working, but it's working. Our in-car computers, they're roughly about five years old, they're as well, they are as well starting to fail. We've been working with IT to get some of those fixed, but some of them are not able to be fixed at this particular point, and so we're down a computer or two here or there. So it'd be, it'd be beneficial to us at this time to be able to, to do this. One, one big reason being is we're currently replacing seven of our, our patrol vehicles this year, and we'd be able to save on some installation costs, rather than installing our current computer and cameras, and then having to later install, you know, take those out and then install the new stuff, which would be an additional cost, so. Currently, we have funds available in internal service for our in-car cameras, we have $171,747. The total project for the new system is $120,375, which leaves us with excess of $51,372 to return back to internal service. We would ask for county board's approval to use some of that $51,000 for the GTAC computers as our total internal service funds for the GTACs are $72,27987, and the projected cost for that, for the new computers and the new mounting hardware, would be $78,5737, which would be an additional $6,295,000 is what we'd be looking for. When we first started going through this, these quotes for both the camera system and the computer system, it was looking like it may not, one would happen, but may not the other because of the costs. We were able to get the computer costs down significantly to be able to make this work for us. We found that the internal service count is a very, very beneficial account for us, so we do thank the commissioners for allowing us to have that. If we would not have that internal service account, we would not be able to make this work.
Yeah, I was going to say that this is proof positive that having an internal service fund is a good thing, because it's a pretty significant project, and we're not looking at very many dollars here to make this work, so that's a great, great thing, so. Any questions for?
This would wipe out the internal service fund, then, wouldn't it, or is that we put so much money in it every year to get the?
Well, it's just on these items, it would.
Right, yeah.
Yeah, it's just on these particular items, we still, there's still other money in internal service for other items.
And then it would start, these items would start to replenish the internal service fund, once they're made, the purchase is made, so.
Correct.
Couple of questions. So the, Mark, the, how many computers are you looking at?
We'd be looking at 15 computers.
15 computers along with the 15 cameras.
Correct, yeah, and that would take care of our entire patrol fleet.
And so you said the 15 computers have what cost to them?
With the, the new computers and the mounting hardware, would be $78,570.37.
When you talked about the $140,000 that was in the internal service fund for the cameras, how much was in the internal service fund for the computers?
The internal service funds available for computers are $72,279.87.
Okay, so, so that difference of 72 and the 70 is at 6,000 roughly, so that 6,000 would reduce that 51,000, is that correct?
Correct, yeah.
So that, so you'd be, you'd be looking at still having about 45, rounding some numbers.
Yeah, roughly.
You'd still have 45,000 in your internal service account for these items?
Yes, correct, yeah.
Yeah, and that could, that could start the base for the new, okay, I just wanted to make sure I understood that correctly.
Any other questions?
It's kind of, just like they had, it's kind of a good time to do it, especially for our camera system. You know, we have our, our base camera at the law enforcement center, now with the new one, we're going to have to move it over, same thing with our antennas. They, they're going to have to be replaced. It's a different, we're going with a different camera system. City of Morehead already has that installed, and they like it, and it's, the price is actually better, and we get better quality product out of it.
With, with this particular camera system, right now, we have a straight-on forward view in our in-car cameras, essentially, it's whatever in front of you is all you're going to see. Where this particular camera system has a panoramic view, so it's, it's a second, it's a second camera built in to the same head, and it allows you to get more of a, a larger field of view, so if something happens in front of your car, which eventually moves off to the side of the car, maybe in the ditch, you do have the potential to capture that as well. So it's, it is beneficial. I was able to watch some of the videos that Morehead has, and there are some things that you can see when you're off to the side of the car with that panoramic camera, that you cannot see with that straight-on forward camera. The clarity is very clear, the audio is very clear, it's, it seems to be a good camera system, we've looked at a couple of different ones. Our current system, I wasn't even, even able to get a quote from them, after talking to them on the phone, and they said he was going to give me a quote, and I didn't get one, and I had to call back, and I never heard back from them.
I know when we were, when we were planning for the LEC, part of the deal was for the, at that time, it was the Morehead PD vehicles would be able to park out there, and they could all upload their computers by Wi-Fi, through the Wi-Fi system, so this will have that same technology then.
Yep, and we currently have that technology as well with our current system. We're just, this is going to have it, and we'll have to run the wires at the same time Morehead does. We're actually going to maybe talk with Morehead IT to see if they can run our wires at the same time, so we're not having to do, you know, two different jobs, you know, at two different times.
Very good.
And you did this camera, you can give the panoramic view, does someone have to be operating it, or does it automatically do that, or?
Once you turn your emergency lights on, the camera automatically comes on, so it'll be running once your emergency lights come on. We also have our microphones that we carry on the lapels that you can activate it through that as well.
Okay.
Yeah, I should also add that, you know, we're looking at for personal cameras, this system would be capable of doing that, if we ever go to that.
Body camera.
Body cameras, yes, which of course is the word written out, but we'll have enough storage and everything, so if we ever do it, we should be, we should be set. All we'd have to buy then, basically, would be the body cameras themselves. Of course, this, it's always about storage, where are you going to be able to keep all this video and all that stuff, and then who's going to maintain it, and then the public data, you know, what's public and what's not. We say with the car cameras, everything is pretty much set of what it is now. Once we go to that body cameras, it's going to be a lot more, so hopefully we wouldn't have to go to that point yet.
Yeah, there are some additional costs that I'm finding with the body cameras that we'd have to look at a little bit more in the future, such as auditing costs and things of that nature. Morehead just went through an audit on two cameras, and it cost them about $2,500. So there's, there's some additional costs to look at as we move forward with that, so we decided to build that server larger right now, in the event we did do that, but we don't have any plans at this point to move forward with body cams. Is there, is there any salvage value to the 15 cameras and computers you're going to be doing away with, or?
Normally, the way we do it, we'll, we'll send it all to the Sheriff's Association to see if anybody would like to buy them. And we, you know, we have to kind of look like, add a value, but, you know, you can maybe get a couple hundred bucks. Jim, you probably know more about cameras than all of this put together, but.
They're not worth very much.
Yeah, correct. After seven years, and they're, they're like a computer, they, and they, they go from the heat to the cold of the car and stuff like that, they start to wear out, and it's tough on them, just as the, the computers are as well, that gets tough on them too.
Four or five years out of a hard drive, and that's about it.
Is that what it is?
Yeah.
Okay, any other questions, discussion? Board's wishes?
I move approval of the purchase.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oh, same sign, motion carries. There you go.
Thank you.
Again, a couple of things, if you've got a few minutes. Number one, I'd just like to update you on the armor system, you know, we've completed that, but we still have to decommission a lot of our stuff that's on towers. They're about halfway's done. Midstate's got the contract, and they're taking stuff down from the towers and actually storing it. So within, again, a deadline to end of June, that they have to be finished with all these projects, where everything's completed. But we still have the buildings there, and I know the city of Barnesville had asked me about if they could have one of the buildings, so once I get to that point, I'll have to come to the board and let's figure out what we want to do with some of that equipment. A lot of that equipment is, you know, we're just going to have to store until we can sell it. But the buildings are the main thing, that we have to try to figure out what we're going to do with it. Hopefully, we can sell some of them, if Fargo or Cas County goes to the armor system, they'll, they'll have a use for that, but it'll be a year down the road at least, and we also have to deal with it instead of me. The second thing I'd like to update is that IEMC summary report, I did send it to Brian, because he was there, that's a five-day course that we had in Fargo about response to a terrorist attack through Fargo-Morehead area. There was four things that came back in that report that were, I guess, things that we have to work on. One is the family service center, the other one is the dispatch center, the location, how vulnerable it is. Second thing was our intelligence sharing throughout the community, we have to get better at that.
So these are recommendations that they found when they were here?
Yeah. We have, we requested them to come up and give us a briefing, a detail basically, on all of this report, and I do have the report, if anybody would like to read it. I could send it to anybody that likes it, so.
It's quite.
And Brian does have it. Did you want to mention anything on it, Brian?
No, Mr. Chair, I read it from cover to cover, Brian. No, I did, I did glance through it, but, you know, and there are recommendations in there, but you also have to remember, in the exercise, when they started going through it, it was, there was a terrorist attack at this location, and then 11 minutes later, it was another one, you know, two miles away, and then 30 minutes later, there was another one over here, and they were saying, well, gee, you guys broke down in your communications of getting all your resources from location to location. Yeah, you do, I mean, that's just the way it is, so you, you have to filter the, the recommendations. I thought things went off pretty darn good, things were communicated fairly well, but in their eyes, in their perfection of how everything should go, we learned a lot from it, and I think that was the big takeaway. There was really good communication, I think, across, across the river, and with the private sector, hospitals were there as well, so I thought it went really well, and they have some, some recommendations. Yes, the, the dispatch center was vulnerable, but you knew that when you purchased it a long time, many years ago, and it still works fairly well until there is, I know Fargo went into a little bit of a panic of looking at a different location right away because of this, well, we, we don't need them to tell us that it's a little bit vulnerable, you know, that's just the way it is, so. Anyway, so you have to filter everything, I guess, in that regard.
One of the others is area command. What is area command? But area command basically is somebody from Fargo-Cas, the city of Morehead, and Clay County, they have to be in command to make a decision where their resources go. So we have to have that separate than everything else, but they're the ones that got to make that decision of prioritizing where some of the resources will go, and that's something that you're going to have to be involved with, along with whatever Brian's position, that they're going to have to be part of that for Clay County, because that's going to be the decision makers that are going to make the do it. And we'll try to get that going, and then also get training, so. A lot of the stuff, it's going to be the responsibility of CAS, Clay, emergency managers to try to get, you know, training and organize the plans.
Yeah, that's a good, good summary.
I think they were impressed with the fact that we already do work pretty closely back and forth between the two different states and two different counties, so they did seem to be impressed by that, and I think we're kind of unique in that, that aspect that they, I don't think they've ever seen that before, so that was, that was nice for us.
Anything else? Thank you.
Thank you.
So, Mr. Chair?
Yes.
If I may, just a little, little bit on the internal service fund. We budget probably in excess of a million dollars a year for the internal service fund, but that is part of all of the different departments' budgets, and like in this case now, when they buy new equipment, Lori will take what they paid, and she will take those 15 cameras, and if they're $5,000 apiece, just as an example, she will break that down into a life cycle of six years, or whatever it might be, and then she'll say, okay, we need to put $1,000 a year into that internal service fund so that those cameras can be replaced. And then the expectation is that they will cost a little more than the current one, so she adds 3% a year to that. So, and it's the same with the big road grader at highway, we, highway budgets probably a little over $600,000 a year, but they do, you do that on a, on an annual basis, so that when you buy that seven or eight of those road graders for a long time million dollars, and the money is in there. But it is divided out per item that is purchased, so she takes every item that is purchased and breaks it down to that effect, and, and then amortizes it out. So that's why each one of them has kind of an individual fund, but it's all within the internal service fund. Our balance on internal service fund is a little over $5 million, so it isn't depleting the internal service fund. It's that one-line item, and it's okay to borrow a little from here to there, and that's what you did today, the $5,000, so, yeah, I don't know if that helps or not.
It does, thank you. Next item on the agenda, information sharing on medical assistance. Larry Young and Rhonda Porter.
Morning.
Morning.
All right, we have a handout, I apologize if I did not get in the board packet.
All right, this is, uh, in follow-up to last week when I gave a board report, just general information about various programs in our agency. And you had some questions about the Minnesota healthcare programs, and so I went back and enlisted Larry to just take, uh, five, ten minutes today just to give you a high-level overview of the Minnesota healthcare programs. Uh, know that we have manuals thick on how to administer these programs, so we tried to just condense it into kinda one-page, um, uh, general information about these programs and hopefully can answer a little better some of the questions you had from last week. So I'm gonna turn it over to Larry.
Thank you. Any questions to start out? Medical assistance is the main program that we administer here in Clay County. Uh, it's the largest program within DHS as well. Um, criteria changes, asset limit changes depending on age and disability and other criteria that goes along with it. Um, we have ways of applying for medical assistance is through our office, through the system we call MAXIS, which has been around for a while, and the new Minture system that, um, was started back in two thousand fourteen. Individuals are able to apply for medical assistance through those systems. Um, and like I said, there, there's income guidelines that varies from age to age, um, and asset limits that change as well. The numbers have increased, the number of medical assistance applications that we've seen have increased over the years because of, primarily because of the ass- or the income guidelines have changed for children especially. We're seeing a lot more children that are eligible for medical assistance because for family size, they're eligible. Mom and dad might not be eligible, but kids are eligible for medical assistance. And we also, we have, um, Minnesota Care is the next program. If you're not eligible for Minnesota medical assistance, then Minnesota Care is a higher standard, higher income standard, and that program is mainly administered down at DHS. Uh, we do handle some of those cases. If the parents are on Minnesota Care and the children are in medical assistance, we, um, we work with those cases on, again, the, the Minture system or the Met system.
Can we just give you some example here? Now, you say sometimes the parents are not eligible, but the kids are eligible?
Yes.
How could that be? I mean, are, are they living, you mean they're not living together?
No, they are living together, but, um, one of the, there's a, income guidelines for parents on a certain state. So mom and dad, their income guidelines are X amount of dollars. And the children have a higher standard. So if mom and dad make two thousand dollars a month, um, mom and dad might not be eligible for medical assistance, but the standard is higher for the children. So we look at the whole household and we determine if, which members of the household are eligible according to the criteria, depending on their age and all of that. So there could, yes, there's lots of cases that we have it. The children are eligible because on one of our forms, um, it can be thirteen hundred dollars is what the income guidelines is for household one. And for children, for household one, it's twenty-seven hundred dollars. So it's twice as much of a standard for children. So the goal is to get children, get people on health insurance to have coverage, and, and the children are the ones that are, I think, have benefited a lot from these changes.
And then if you're, for example, a pregnant woman, the income standard is higher as well. So, um, you can go through, there's, I think, thirteen different categories here, and depending on where you fall, there's, uh, income scales for each of those at different levels of the federal poverty guideline. So it's, can be quite confusing to look at eligibility.
Any questions for these people?
I did last, um, week, the information, we had a little over thirteen thousand individuals on medical assistance. That was the number that I had shared with you. I went back, cause I was curious to see, you know, we have different counties that we often compare ourselves to. I compare ourselves a lot to Crow Wing. It seems like our numbers match up in a lot of areas. So just to give you an example, Crow Wing had fourteen thousand eight hundred, and ours was that, um, little over thirteen thousand. Uh, Blue Earth is another county I compare ourselves a lot to. They were a little over twelve thousand. Um, just out of curiosity, I was seeing how we fell in comparison to some of those communities, and that's for medical assistance. Our Minnesota Care enrollment is, um, we're about five hundred and fifty, and we, we fall pretty comparable to those counties as well. Um, so our, I think some of our demographics are similar.
I was just looking at, I mean, uh, a month, two months ago, we were aware that we're the fourth fastest-growing county in the state of Minnesota, you know, proud of that fact, you know? But then I look at the social services, why are we also growing there?
Yeah, 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 absolutely.
So, uh, where is our growth? You know, it's just, uh, is it good growth? Uh, um, I mean, I guess, yes, if we're growing, it's good growth, but, uh, it's costing us the way it looks.
Well, we certainly see a demand for our services increase over time. It's difficult to, um, have data to show is that our new folks coming in or if that's just other factors influencing the growth in our community. The other question you had asked last week is a little bit about, um, verifications and how do those applications kinda have that quality assurance check in terms of folks applying?
So, uh, in, in the current system that we have with MAXIS, we have annual renewals so that individuals have to turn in, um, a yearly renewal that updates their income. If they have a change in income, they're supposed to be reporting to that, us to that, as, as it changes. And then we determine if that does change their eligibility. And Met's, or Minture system, it's also the same way, it's done on an annual basis. Uh, there's some hubs in the background in that system that verifies information for us sometimes. So if my income is X amount of dollars in among the system, it will verify it through these backgrounds that will determine if what I put in the system is correct to what the system says. So it, it helps us a little bit where we don't have to verify those things as often, but the verifications don't all its work. And then they send us a, a report that says we need to check with you to verify what your income is, and then we send that paper to government.
When, when we look at these medical assistance, oh, which was thirteen thousand one thirty-two last year, um, is there, do we keep track of what the residency requirement is? I mean, how many of these are, are new people to Clay County? Or how many people have lived there for five years or ten years? I mean, do we track that at all, or is this, uh?
We don't, we don't, because if they move here from any other county or any other state even, they can move into the state of Minnesota and become eligible for medical assistance right away.
Right away, that, no, no thirty-day wait or anything like that, huh?
And we do, we do see, um, some diff- difficulties with that being a border state in terms of that healthcare coverage. Um, so we do see folks relocating to our area, and within a day, they're eligible for the healthcare programs. Um, and then therefore, it opens the door for some of the other Medicaid waivered services. So we are seeing a bit of that in our disability area, especially with some of the cuts that they've made in North Dakota to disability services. So we're tracking that a bit to be able to communicate that and, um...
I mean, we can probably track it, but can we do anything about it?
Right, right. People have a right to choose where they wanna live.
I mean, so they can come from North Dakota over here, and back over to North Dakota?
Yeah, but in terms of the healthcare programs, in terms of some of the other services, there's no guarantee of eligibility. So, for example, for, um, Medicaid waiver programs, they have to meet eligibility. They have to go through the, uh, lengthy Minture's screening, and they may or may not be eligible for those services. So they may be eligible for, um, medical assistance in general, but not the enhanced Medicaid waiver services that require, um, different screening process.
There, there's, Rhonda, there, and Larry, there's, there's a, there's a set standard that the federal government has, right? Because the federal government also funds a significant portion of this. So there is certain criteria that all states have to meet in terms of the federal portion of it. There, there, but you can get into, uh, state legislatures can do things on their own that exceed the standards of the federal government. I think that's where Minnesota and North Dakota have their differences.
Yes.
And that becomes the issue for bordering states. So I think it's good to track it. Uh, I think it'd be good to track it the best that we can. If nothing else, just so that our legislature is aware of, of some of the impacts that can, can happen on a border community. Um, it's, I'm, I'm not gonna sit and say that it, it's all a bad thing, but I do wanna say, when you talk about, um, I think a, a vast more of the reason why we're the fourth-largest growing city, or county in the state, is the fact that, um, we have jobs here. And I, I firmly want, I, I'm convinced more that that's why people are coming here. Uh, as, you know, Commissioner Whelan and I both are on the greater Fargo-Morehead economic development. And one of the goals there has always been to make sure that we have a, you know, a reasonable job force here. And, and over the last few years, if you listen to the business community, they're saying their number-one issue outside of flood protection is having, you know, a good source of jobs. And, and, um, so I think that's why we're seeing people here, but, anyway.
One, one of the things with the, um, tracking, so we wouldn't be able to track it through the Met system, but we maybe could, um, make a request to our State Department through their data warehouse to see if they can vet some of that information and see what they can draw for us.
There's, there's no timeline for medical assistance, but there is a thirty-day residency for some of the other programs that we administer. So people come over here, and we do have to take information that says, when did they move here to Minnesota?
Right, so that...
So we can be able to do that through that system. But yes, the healthcare part of it, I, um, because it's the ability for people to apply on their own at their home, even to apply for medical assistance. I don't know if there's a question that says, when did you move to Minnesota? And if, and again, it's the whole state, when did you move to Minnesota versus when did you move to Clay County? So I don't even know if we can break it down and say, when did you move here? The question is, when did you move to Minnesota? Because the criteria is the same across, across the state, um, for each program.
Like I said, my question was, we're the fastest-growing, and I hope Commissioner Campbell's saying is right, you know, and I, uh, that's what we, Clay County, we've got jobs, so that's why they're coming here. But when we see Clay County's doing, growing fast, and so is our social services unit growing fast, so.
Anything else? Thank you, Larry, thank you, Rhonda.
Yeah, thanks.
Thanks for your good work. Next item on the agenda, request for approval to increase hours for public health project manager from eight point eight to one F T E. And change an administrative staff support position from variable hour to point six.
Good morning.
Good morning, ladies.
Um, let's see, I'm not sure which one was first, but, you know, with the request to increase, um, individual from point eight to one F T E. And as we noted in the information sheet, this is part of our health promotion area. And we have two grant funding sources, the Community Wellness Grant and the SHIP statewide health improvement grant. Now, we have had a one F T E that, um, was in these programs, it no longer is in there. So our request, when we hired this individual, was point eight, just because that's the grant funding amounts that we had for her. We have now one F T E that opened up. We're going to take point two of that, since she's already on board and she can move forward with the work. And then the point eight left will have to be, um, figured out. But we don't have a person that will be, um, most likely hiring for a point eight only because the Community Wellness Grant is done in about six months, and that will not be renewed. So we have Community Wellness Grant done in six months, the SHIP grant will continue on. So we're requesting the, oh, and I apologize, I have the, I have the, um, calculations here as well. So...
I'm sorry.
And, and again, there's no, no county dollars that go into these programs at all, nor has there ever been county dollars that have gone into the SHIP program and the Community Wellness program. So it's all covered by the grant funds, including the increase in her, in the point two, and then the benefits along with that. So everything is paid for. Um, with the grant ending in six months, a Community Wellness Grant, at that point, will determine how we're going to figure out the, the rest of the time with the SHIP funding, so. And everyone that's hired within these grant programs are always informed that when the grant funding ends, you know, their employment may end or their hours may be reduced, depending on what we have.
Questions?
This, uh, this was brought to our pick committee, and our pick committee recommended approval.
Mr. Chair?
Brian?
Uh, no, this wasn't the one that was brought up.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Okay, I'm sorry.
It was the next one, Mr. Campbell.
When Kathy, and I talked to Kathy this morning on it, so for simplicity's sake, what's happening, she had a vacancy with a full-time employee, and she wants to move her point eight person into that full-time position. And then, like she said, she'll figure out the point eight later on, whether she comes and asks for that or whatever. So that's really all she's asking for, is the point eight to move to the full-time. Am I, got that right? Yeah?
I made to that.
Yeah. I'm approving. Have a motion?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All the same sign, motion carries.
Thank you. The next position, yeah, Commissioner Campbell said, we did bring that to the pick committee, and that was for our environmental health support person. Um, we went through a round of licensing, um, processing this last fall, and we have about nine hundred licenses that we process through Clay-Wilkin and Otter Tail. So we all, we do it all in Clay County. It's, um, we have the person that is knowledgeable about that, it's very streamlined. And as you can see on the sheet I just handed out, Otter Tail pays their portion of this, um, support staff based on their licensing fees that are processed. So we have an individual that is already variable hour, so we're requesting a point six in the hopes that she can manage this fully for the food pool and lodging program. The last processing we had, we had multiple people that we had to pull in to process those licenses. So it was a variety of people, and it gets, um, complicated and problematic when you have multiple people that aren't familiar with the, um, data processing and the entry and, and that type of thing. The, uh, license fees, the revenue that we receive pays for, will pay for this additional person. We have revenue both in our Clay and Wilkin counties and Otter Tail county. And as you can see, again, Clay, Wilkin, Morehead pays forty-one percent, and Otter Tail will pay the fifty-nine percent. So, and then there's no county dollars that will come into play here.
Any questions? Board's wishes?
I'll make a motion, approve.
Have a motion, do I have a second?
I'll second it, and I, um, this, this was brought up, um, at our pick committee, and it was brought up, you know, a long time ago as well. This is something that, um, the, you know, I think we first talked about this six to nine months ago.
Right.
And I think at that time, um, if I'm not mistaken, um, Commissioner Gross was on the pick committee at that time when we did that, and...
Yes.
And, um, you know, we, we struggled with that, uh, at that particular point in time, and, um, to me, there was some indications of, um, the potential from our commercial establishments of maybe seeing potential... of maybe seeing potential delays or a slowdown in, in being able to get license renewals and all that stuff on a proper timeframe. And I, I don't think we can risk doing that for our commercial establishments. And so, it was, it was with that in mind that we, our personal issues committee has agreed to move forward with this. Six months ago, we did not have as much with Otter Tail, I don't believe. When did we start that? Or maybe, I guess that, we did have that, but...
We had been through one full year already with Otter Tail.
Okay. But we have, have a little more history from when we first started talking about this. So, I think it's one of those things, you're damned if you do and you're damned if you don't, you know? But, and, you know, to make sure that our, our, all of our commercial businesses get, make, get their food licenses on time, I would move that we go with this.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, signify the same eye.
Aye.
All the same sign, motion carries. Thank you, ladies.
Thank you.
Okay, we're at committee reports. Jim, you have anything?
Yeah. On Tuesday, the 17th, after our meeting here, we had the building committee, and we discussed maintenance issues and upgrades and whatnot with Joe, and we looked at scenarios over the next, this year and subsequent years. And that was taken care of. Then that afternoon, I attended the Clay County Adult Mental Health Monthly Meeting. And let's see, on Thursday, I attended the MetraCog, and was, the most notable thing there was, we discussed the human resources contract with West Fargo's HR department holding the HR action four on behalf of the MetraCog. And that led into the executive director meeting that we had yesterday for the MetraCog, in which we had interviews with two candidates for the executive director of MetraCog. And I think that's all I had. Oh, I'm sorry. Friday morning, I had the Early Childhood Network breakfast, and we had, from all the different stakeholders in the early childhood group, the home visitors, we had a presentation on home visiting and the importance of that.
Thank you. Kevin?
Okay. Just for a second. Last Tuesday, we had a personal issues committee meeting, and we went over, those issues were with public health, and we've acted on those issues today. And we also started a discussion about when we have union negotiations, when we, when we start to use outside, when we should start to use outside sources versus internal resources to, to deal with those. And we're going to have some more ongoing discussion with that and probably bring something for full discussion to our board here in the near future. Then the next day, I had a diversion executive session, and that was to get some updates on where we are with the search for an executive director for the diversion authority. And that process is in place, and they're going to maybe look at widening that scope a little bit. So, we've got another meeting scheduled for May. Later that day, I met at the highway department with a landowner in County Road Three who had issues with some trucks. So, we met with both our engineer and our assistant engineer with that individual to kind of clarify some, some issues that he had with turnbacks and those types of things. But we also are going to look more into, that road is scheduled for a mill and overlay in 2022, so the last of our five-year plan. And one of the concerns would be if that deteriorates too much, we would no longer than be able to do a mill and overlay, which would create a much more costly project. And so, we're looking at, they're going to go out and look at that. They're noticing at least, especially the southbound lane is, appears to be deteriorating more, and that would be a sign of the heavy trucks coming from the north that these people are concerned with. And so, if that's the case, we would then have the ability to maybe sign that down to restrict heavy trucks. So, that's a work in progress that we're looking at. Then we had our West Central Regional Detention Meeting last Thursday morning, and that went very well. We had our usual 2017 budget recap, 2018 budget update, and Stephen gave a good presentation on some MINDOT, or not, Department of Corrections criteria. We had Ben Mattson from Construction Engineers and Carrie from Michael Burns there to show all the member counties the updates that we have on the expansion and remodeling project, and they were all pretty impressed with that process. Then on Friday, I went to, along with Commissioner Wayland, we had a Prairie Lake Solid Waste budget meeting. And at that meeting, I had been given some information or some proposals out there, and they wanted to basically increase Clay County's through some formula that, I don't know where they made this formula up, but it wasn't good for Clay County, to put it mildly. We, they wanted us to go from a $357,000 contribution to a $401,000 contribution, which would have been a $44,000 year, or year increase for us, while the other counties all saw a decrease. And so, I created a little spreadsheet to bring there, and when we left, our proposed number of 401,000, 196 a year went down to $265,000, $265,500. So, what they were proposing we pay and what we're going to be paying is $135,000, $135,000 a year difference to our good. So, it was a worthwhile trip to Prairie Lake Saturday. And then we got, we got, also at that meeting, there was, we got a little bit of an update on, on some of the, the plant is up and running now, and they had to, there was a 1.1 million dollar bond that, that Otter Tail had done to do the work on that project. And getting into it, there was another area that they needed to deal with, and it was $145,000 over and above the 1.1. The good news is, is that that money was already in the 2018 budget for major repairs and issues. So, that, that in itself should help keep the budget neutral. That was enough for me last week.
Break.
Yeah, we had the building committee meeting, which Commissioner Henry talked about. We also talked about the re-carpeting projects that we're working on, you know? We're possibly going to go more to the judges' chambers, because we're getting a new judge, I guess, tomorrow, I guess, there's a new judge coming in. So, we're probably looking at redoing that carpeting, and we're probably going to hold off on the third floor up here. I don't know whether Solid Waste or whatever, going to be moving out or not on the new building. So, going to hold up on that project a little bit. Another thing, in fact, I see them working there this morning, is this, we have to require to bring in a lactation room that has to be set up here at the courthouse. I guess they already have one over the family service center, but anyone here should decide to put that right in here in Colleen's office there, in that corner where that desk is sitting. They're going to put a wall up there. If you look outside that wall, there's already a door bleeding into that thing, so there'll be very little modification to be doing that. That will be set up for the, for that room. Joe gives a big plan on his sidewalk improvement program over by the family service center. Some we'll have to cover, and some will be covered by the city of Morehead that's on the south side of the building over there, so.
Got a replacement or...
Yeah. If you want to see pictures of some of the stuff that needs to be replaced, I've got pictures, I've got pictures of all the sidewalk that needs to be replaced. Something needs to be done. Wednesday, went to drug court, another good session there, another person graduated there. And, I mean, he was in the program for four, five years, but it looks to me like they did a good graduation, and he's ready to go and be a member of the society. Wednesday afternoon, Historical Society, they're giving, I wonder, the gift acceptance policy there. They're trying to come up with some system that, some say, "Well, here, I want to donate this to the Historical Society," you know? Well, it hasn't got anything to do with Clay County, hasn't, you know, okay, they store it, is it going to cost to store it? So, they want to come up with some sort of policy that, you know, once you give it to there, should they accept it or not, and stuff like that. So, other things we covered there was the, they have a heritage award that they give out every year, and this is John Everett was nominated for that award, which will be, I think, the next Thursday, I think, the meeting is. I'm not going to be able to make that meeting, because I'm going to be out of town, but that award will begin with John then. And last night, I went to the Dilworth City Council meeting. They have got a lot of, they got a 103-lot development going on over there, and that has spurred on further development now, to have some commercial development. It's just north of Highway 10, you know, and there's 103-lot development that they're putting in now. Some other people have got wind of that, and they say, "Hey, we want to put some commercial stuff in there and stuff." So, that's all in the making there. Looks like there's going to be a lot of growth on the east side of Dilworth this year. That's it.
Okay. Well, let's see, I had the detention advisory board also, and that went, I thought, extremely well. And I think we have complete support from all our partner counties in the expansion of the detention center, and so that's a good thing, and everything's moving forward with that. I also went along with his backup to the Prairie Lakes meeting for Commissioner Campbell, which it turned out he didn't need. By the time he got done with him, they were all pretty much speechless, so. And we saved a lot of money, so that, it was worthwhile to go, so. And that was it for me. Brian?
Mr. Chair, I'm still chuckling at your backup comment with your background. You look at everything as backup, huh? Okay. Yeah, the pick meeting, that's already been covered in depth by Ted as well. And campus improvement committee, I, I think we've been making real good progress there. Joe keeps the, the long-term capital improvement plan up to date and identifies weaknesses in our system, as Commissioner Gross pointed out, the pictures of the sidewalk. And frankly, that's pretty darn important, to keep an eye on those things that, that heave and shift for, because they're trip hazards and things, so we're very good about that. I had a meeting with Kirk a couple of times, and one was to talk about the issues that Commissioner Campbell and Commissioner Wayland referred to, and I too have to compliment our commissioners going over there, following up on that. Commissioner Campbell took the time to, to develop a spreadsheet and, and show the tonnage and the costs, and it was just really kind of an unfortunate situation that they were going down the wrong road, we felt, and obviously that was proven of. So, we really appreciate that involvement. We did have Wednesday afternoon, a, another committee of the formation of the land management committee to talk about where we go with the next step. Remember, the first step was basically moving planning and zoning down to the assessors' office, and now we had quite an extended discussion as to how we now incorporate the recorders' office into there. What we're trying to do is come up with some suggestions to run by pick committee, and then we'll come to, to you folks for a final decision on if there's change there or inclusive of how we shape that, or how we suggest that we shape it. I had also a central administration managers' meeting on Thursday morning, and then followed up by attending the juvenile center meeting, which I will say, from an observer, observer, I thought there was frankly, a lot of enthusiasm for the new project in the room. And frankly, some time ago, I know Commissioner Wayland, when we were talking about how we fund the juvenile center and, you know, buying beds and all those kinds of things, he came up with a, with a suggestion that we, we vetted, and, and it's really proven to be a fine example of you pay what you use, but 100% of it gets paid every year and depends upon what you use, going back two years. I think that's just a fantastic formula, and it includes a 20-year contract. So, that is really, really, really nice going into 2019, so. And there was even a compliment in regards to, I can't remember which commissioner mentioned that, but thought that that new financing plan was the only way to go, too. So, again, it's one of those, those additional costs that come with hosting, something like that is the time that's consumed in doing that. And then we had a follow-up, and I'll call it a jail or correctional facility in law enforcement ribbon-cutting event. We did start with a committee on that, which involves your two commissioners here and then city officials, and then we were tasked with a smaller working group to try to get some things going. And we had a meeting, and we certainly, but we've got another follow-up meeting with the full committee here very soon. But we, our discussion centered around several things, but one of the things that hopefully we will, we will get your guys' support and go ahead on is that we feel this is, this is going to be quite an event. You're not going to have a dedication of a new correctional facility in the law enforcement center for 50 years, let's say. So, we want this to be an event that attracts some community attention. So, we're looking at some kind of, I don't want to say going outside of the box, but maybe following some other things that other people did. Hopefully, the, the mayor and the board chair will, our commissioners here will endorse a letter of invitation, maybe to the governor, to speak at the event. And we've talked about even a little bit of a flyover, if we can round that up, and just some really things to generate some, some enthusiasm for this, because it's a pretty big event. So, we'll see what our commissioners say. We've got other, some other ideas, too, that we'll talk about in committee. But we had a pretty enthusiastic group, I think. Colleen sat in there and took minutes of it, so it seemed like it was going well. Met with Mark, Lieutenant, emptying on the cameras and the computer systems, and we talked about the financing of it and different things. I did attend a para session on Friday that was in town here, very, very good information. Had a meeting with personnel, with the sheriffs' office and some personnel matters, and yesterday as well. And I think that kind of concludes my report. Mr. Chair?
Thank you. Anything else?
No.
Okay, word adjourned.